Good morning. I'd like to call Lion County Board of County Commissioners to order. Today is Thursday, September fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, is nine thirty-six A.M. The Board of County Commissioners convenes with other boards. Members of this Board of County Commissioners also serve as a liquor board, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Boards, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. Note, this meeting may break between eleven-thirty and one-thirty, and we do have a time certain at eleven o'clock. All the Commissioners are present and in chambers. And we don't have Mr. Poundstone on for the invocation, so we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Hendricks, will you please lead us? This brings us to public participation. No action was taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record, and will be limited to three minutes. The Board will conduct public comment and after discussion of each agenda item, but before the Board takes any action. Do we have any public comment in the room?
Good morning. Thank you. Mike Workman, date resident for the record. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and Colts, Coach Lou Holtz once said, "In order to have a goal, you've got to say it and you've got to write it down." And about twenty-one years ago, we were building the Utilities Department. I was the Utilities Director then. We were doing interviews, and a young man came in, dressed up, had a tie on. You could tell he wasn't real comfortable, a little bit nervous. And through that interview, he did quite well, even though he was nervous. And one of the last questions I asked that young man was, "What's your, what's your future goal? What do you see in your future?" And he looked at me square in the eye and says, "I want your job." Well, today Sean's got that, or at least on an interim basis. And I just wanted to stand up here and and acknowledge Sean, I'm very, very proud of his accomplishments. I am pleased that the, the county manager and this board is, is supporting him. I know he can continue with that support. It's, it's really, really an accomplish, a, a personal accomplishment of mine, is pride to look at him. I've watched him come in as a kid who, not too long before he came to work for us, had to bury his own mother. He, he grew as an employee. He, he helped us through some very difficult times. Watched him get engaged and get married, become a good husband, a great father, and one of the best employees. If I ever had to rebuild a team and needed an A-team, he'd be one of my first calls. So, thank you, Sean. Hang in there. I'm proud of you, and I know that you all must be proud of him too. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Do we have any other public comment in the room? Seeing none, we'll move on to, or is there any online? Seeing none, we'll move on to to number five for possible action, review and adoption of agenda. Anybody have comment or questions? Entertain a motion?
Check out, I made the motion that we approved the agenda as presented.
Second, you know, the motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Hockaday. Do we have any public comment? See none in the room and none online. Those in favor say aye. Motion passes five-zero. Commissioner County Manager reports. We'll start with Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chair. Attended the grand open ribbon-cutting ceremony for the ERC there in Fernley, home of the Boys and Girls Club. Want to thank Commissioner Hendricks, Commissioner Hockaday, and Commissioner Keller for attending. I know it was in the middle of the workday and appreciated their support and, and being there. What a wonderful facility. It is going to be packed with kids. Boots are already on the ground to get an early childhood center going to help the residents of Fernley as well for a safe place for their kids at a very young age. So, moving right along, and it really turned out nice. Attended the Fernley City Council Meeting. Also attended Frontstock fundraiser for the Fernley Community Foundation. We've done a lot of work and, and kind of a lot of vision code riding around down regarding the facility that I previously spoke of. Also attended a Boys and Girls Club meeting. We have the Fernley Boys and Girls Club Awards Banquet and Recognition October second, if you're free for that. And just want to remind every, everybody, drive carefully. The school's back in session, and it seems like the walk zones are longer. Just be on the heads up. I know the sun hits those windshields and it's tough, so just be careful out there. That's all I have.
Commissioner Hendricks.
I attended the Nevada Association of Counties Public Lands and Natural Resources Board meeting. There was a lot of discussion around the wild horse issue there. Attended the NACO Board of Directors meeting. Also attended the Carson River Thirty Year Water Modeling Meeting, paying attention to that because we could be seeing some changes coming forward there. I did also attend the ribbon-cutting and was really impressed with the work that Core Construction did managing that product, project. What they've ended up with is just an amazing facility. Also attended last night the Stagecoach Advisory Board.
Thank you. Commissioner Cassinelli.
Thank you, Chair. Had a meeting with Jeff Sutich at Northern Nevada Development Authority. Also had a meeting with representatives from the Northern Nevada Industrial Center. Met with Carson City Supervisor Lisa Schute regarding potential collaboration on a regional transportation hub. Mount House Advisory Board was canceled, but I did speak with a couple of the representatives there. Our Conservation District meeting was also canceled this month. However, the permit for the Richie Perdido Bank Stivation Project has finally been issued, so we're looking forward to that getting going here pretty soon. And I attended the Dayton Advisory Board meeting last night.
Thank you. Commissioner Hockaday.
Yeah, I attended the Fernley Ribbon Cutting, beautiful facility there. Glad that I was able to make it up to the north end of the county and take a look at that and had a very nice turnout. Also had a discussion with Northern Nevada Industrial Center, David Brown, just discussing what's going on with that industrial complex up there. Labor Day felt like I needed to get some labor in, so the last time I met at Valley Grove Cemetery with Senator Titus, there was any place to park in the front by the entry gates, so I went over there and cleared all the two- and three-foot weeds out of the way and cleaned up basically the entrance area for that old, old cemetery. And then, of course, the Smith Valley Citizens Advisory Board was canceled last night. Glad I ran back in the house to get an agenda before driving over there. Had a big meeting canceled. Didn't make the trip. But that's about, about all I did for the last couple of weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner Hockaday. I also attended the Ribbon Cutting in Fernley of the Community Response and Resource Center, which is also Boys and Girls Club location. I attended the Fernley City Council. I also attended the NACO Association of Counties Public Lands and Natural Resources Committee that Commissioner Hendricks already spoke about. I attended the Nevada Association of Counties General Board Meeting, and we're getting ready for the state meeting coming up. And I also attended the National Association of Counties Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee, the Steering Committee. And what, what we did do with NACO, I'll let you guys know that we, NACO, through NACO, submitted a comment letter to the USDA on the proposed department reorganization plan. Our letter emphasizes the importance by preserving USDA's field presence in rural communities, ensuring continuity of operations throughout the reorganization, and clarifying the new regulation hub model USDA has proposed. While offer, while also offering constructive recommendations on how to strengthen coordination and service delivery within county governments. We really don't want them to pull back from the rural communities. And that's all I have. So, County Manager Haskin.
Good morning, Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager. I'll keep it brief since we're running a little bit behind today, but there was two things that I wanted to touch on. One, last year, or last year, last week with the thunderstorms that we had, we had some flash flooding in Central Lion County, basically East Dayton and Stagecoach. And so, a lot of that impacted Highway fifty due to some of the drainage culverts that are running under Highway fifty. I do want to thank the Emergency Management Team, the Sheriff's Office, Search and Rescue, the Roads Department, and Utilities for all their work. They all got called out for various flooding issues and worked late those two nights. It was two nights in a row. And put a lot of effort into it. The last couple of years since two thousand and twenty-three, the two thousand and twenty-three flooding, the Road Department has been putting a lot of effort into ditching the sides of our roads in those areas because they were trouble areas in two thousand and twenty-three, and I do believe that paid off substantially. Some of the areas that were impacted, for example, in two thousand and twenty-three, like North Rainbow and whatnot, had significantly less impacts due to the efforts that the Road Department has put in over the last couple of years. So, really want to throw a shout out to them and all their hard work. They've been doing a fantastic job there. Most of the impacts, as I mentioned before, were to end out right of ways on the highways. We've had discussions with them in the past about culverts and trying to upsize those. I think that while they are doing their pavement preservation project, this would be a great opportunity since the road is going to be torn up anyway. So I will be bringing that back up to the Director. I'm working on scheduling a meeting now. The second thing that I wanted to touch on was a bit of good news yesterday afternoon, and I don't want to steal the utility departments' thunder with their presentation, but yesterday afternoon, we did get an approval letter for the Woodbridge Phase Two final map. So, NDP is signing final maps again in the Dayton area, in the Dayton Sewer Service area. And so, you know, the team has been putting a lot of work into that. We've had several meetings and it seems like we're on the right path there. Happy to answer any questions that the Board has.
Any questions for Mr. Haskin? I did want to point out something that I received a, a film of some of the flooding, and, and thank you for telling me to send it to you because without even thinking about it, I just looked at it. But if anybody ever notices flooding or any of these type of events, sending it to the county manager, so at least we have a record of it, so that we, when we go to apply for grants or to do legislation, we do have some documentation, and it helps us tell our story. So, thank you for pointing that out to me.
Well, and thanks for sending it. I really appreciate it. That drainage happened to be privately owned drainage ditch, but it's still good to know where the, where the trouble points are. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move on to elected officials' reports. Any elected officials? None in the room and none online? We'll move on to number eight, appointed officials' reports.
Good morning. Taylor Allison, Emergency Management and Government Affairs Director. County Manager touched on most of what I was going to hit on as far as the flash flooding. I just wanted to quickly remind the community that we do maintain all the self-fill public sandbag locations, as well as work closely with the cities on their locations that they could get out and fill sandbags. And these thunderstorms are really difficult to preposition resources for because we don't know, you know, exactly where they're going to hit us. So, I appreciate the community. It was great to see neighbors helping neighbors clear culverts and, and get out as much as they could and get water free flowing. So I appreciate everybody's, the whole community effort, especially there the Highway fifty corridor, but I know Smith Valley and other communities were impacted. And then the other thing I want to touch on is that several of our departments were impacted by the state cyber incident. So, Emergency Management has been working closely with Office of Emergency Management at the state level in guiding their prioritization of restoration services, including those for public safety. The systems that we rely on is county government to continue services to our citizens. So they took our notes and prioritized those as they're, they're getting those back online. Not any direct impacts to our county networks, but it does impact our residents and the services that they receive from us. So, we'll continue to do that through the duration of this incident as they get us recovered and, and back online.
Any questions or comments for the emergency manager? Saying none, thank you. Any other appointed officials? Okay, moving on to Advisory Board reports. Seeing none online? None in the room? Move to number ten, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by upon by the Board of County Commissioners in one action without an extensive hearing. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the Consent Agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. We have ten A through ten M. Anybody want one poll? Commissioner Jacobson?
I don't need anything polled, but if my math is correct, I believe county staff helped bring in one point three million in grants, and I just want to recognize that and draw attention to our staff for doing exceptional work. So, I just want to say thank you.
Going back to the Consent Agenda, does anyone want something polled or discussed? Any member of the public? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the, move the Consent Agenda items ten A through ten M.
Check it.
A motion by Commissioner Hockaday, second by Commissioner Cassinelli. Those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Motion passes five-zero. Brings us to ten J. For possible action, accept the Joining Forces Project Agreement grant in the amount of seventy-five thousand with a match of eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty from the State of Nevada Department of Public Safety Office of Traffic Safety and to authorize the sheriff to sign. Who's presenting this? Oh, wait, excuse me. I'm back on the Consent Agenda. Sorry for everybody kind of lost you on that. I turned the page and it was on the top of the page. Sorry. I didn't consent again. I read the first thing on the top. So, Sheriff Pope, he's going to get you one way or the other. Regular agenda. Member Robin, Public Hearing on Planning Items for Possible Action, approve the request for from Hunter's Place LLC Series A for zoning map amendment to amend the zoning map designation from Title X, District RR five, Fifth Rural Residential District, twenty acres to the Title fifteen District of AG Agriculture, twenty acre minimum located at thirteen eighty Highway two oh eight in Mason Valley for a parcel approximately twenty-three point one six acres, APN oh one two four two one oh one, PLZ twenty twenty-five zero thirty-two. Non.
Good morning. Yes, good morning, Commissioners Lisa Nash, Senior Planner. So, we are here to talk about the zoning map amendments that is, the applicant has requested. It's on a single parcel changing from RR five, the Fifth Rural Residential District, twenty acre minimum to the Title fifteen District of AG Ag with a twenty acre minimum. So, the vicinity map here shows the location. It's at thirteen eighty Highway two oh eight in Mason Valley. The total parcel is twenty-three point one six acres, sloping gently from the southwest to the northeast. Access to this parcel exists from Highway two oh eight current. So, but it is master planned within the Rural Character District, District in South Mason Valley, and the master plan designates the property as agriculture under the land use. So here we're looking at the master plan land use table. You can see that under the master plan use of agriculture, ag zoning and NIA are the two zones that are allowed within this. We currently have a, a lot of RR twenty, rural residential twenty acres that are under ag, but this was adopted in twenty twenty and is an allowable zoning use within the ag master plan land use. This was a new zoning district with the adoption of Title fifteen. The intent was to allow additional activities that are compatible with agricultural areas. Most new uses that have a significant impact, as shown in the staff report, would require conditional uses to be used as well, to be allowed. So, the, as you can see on the left, the current zoning is RR twenty, as is all of the surrounding area. The, on the right shows that it would change to the ag zoning. It is a new zoning districts within this area, and there are very few of them in the county so far, since it was a newly adopted. However, it is consistent with the RR twenty. That's one of the benefits of ag. It just allows some additional uses. And in the staff report, you'll see now we're adding the list of allowed uses within that district, so you know what you're looking at when we make a change. The intent, again, is to allow for additional activities that are compatible. And the applicant has stated that the intent is to allow for future development of agricultural tourism, including the already existing growing and harvesting of lavender that they're doing, and the future addition of a small family farm store with light commerce, including a possible wedding venue and gift shop. Many of these uses would require CUPs or additional entitlements to move forward. So this is just the first step to continue what they're doing and grow in that area. So, as usual, we look at the findings for any zone change. Chapter fifteen point two two oh point oh five lists the findings that we're considering, and there's a few things I want to discuss, highlights of this. The first finding is, is it consistent with the policies of the master plan and the underlying land use designation? Ag is an allowed zoning district within agricultural master plan land use. And I particularly wanted to point out, policy LU four point one, it encourages the continuation of an agricultural lifestyle in appropriate rural areas of the county. This allows for the same type of agricultural lifestyle that is currently being used, but aligns the zoning correctly. Currently, the parcel grows lavender plants that are harvested and sold, encouraging a stronger economic base. Moving on to B, the proposed will not be inconsistent with the adequate public facilities policy. It does not introduce a new need for public services that are not already provided to the surrounding parcels, and the property is serviced by an individual well and septic, as are all the surrounding properties in the area. Any additional commercial uses or anything might require changes to that or expansions, and that would be covered under conditional use permits or administrative design reviews, et cetera, and building permit. The C, the proposed amendment is compatible with actual or master planned adjacent uses. Staff does feel that it is consistent, and it is a newer district that we're starting to expand. We hope to see more ag land. It protects that ag field that we, is important in the southern part of our county here. So, we don't feel it should significantly increase density in the neighborhood, nor would it introduce any use that's incompatible, in our opinion. So, with that, this was heard by the Planning Commission on August twelfth, and it was approved unanimously. The, there was very few questions and comments at that period, so they did forward a recommendation of approval, and I am here for any questions, as are the applicants.
Question from the Board? Entertain a motion?
Based on the aforementioned findings, I move that the Board of County Commissioners approves the request from Hunter's Place LLC Series A for a zoning map amendment to amend the zoning map designation from Title X District of RR five, Fifth Rural Residential District, twenty acres to the Title fifteen District of AG, a twenty acre minimum located at thirteen eighty Highway two oh eight in Mason Valley for a parcel totaling approximately twenty-three point one six acres, APN zero one two dash four two one dash zero one, PLZ two zero two five dash zero four two.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Hockaday. We have a motion by Commissioner Hockaday, second by Commissioner Jacobson. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none online or in the room. Those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Brings us to eleven B, for possible action, to approve the request from Lucas Homes and Development LLC for zoning map amendment to, to amend the zoning map designation from the Title X District of C two General Commercial District to the Title fifteen District of TC hyphen S, tourist commercial suburban, for a five point two one acre of the intersection of Highway fifty and Traditions Parkway in Dayton, APN sixteen four one ninety-seven and twenty-nine seven eight two sixteen, PLZ, PLZ twenty twenty-five forty-three. Senior Planner? Ms. Nash?
Good morning again, Commissioner, Senior Planner, Lisa Nash. So, the applicant's request here today is also a zone change amendment. This would apply on two parcels. It would change the zoning from the Title X District of General Commercial District to the Title fifteen of tourist commercial suburban. You can see the property is located at the east of the intersection of Highway fifty and Traditions Parkway. The site consists of the two parcels. The one furthest to the west is a portion of that parcel. So, out of a total twenty-three point nine three acres, this zone change is only applying to twenty-two point two five acres. Access to the property would be from Traditions Parkway and Nevada Station Parkway. And the property is generally flat with a basin existing at the north end of the left parcel, APN zero two nine seven eighty-two sixteen. So the site is master planned within the suburban character district in Dayton as commercial and suburban residential. So, you can see that the leftmost, zero two nine, APN, has suburban residential on the north portion of it and commercial on the south. This north portion will remain as a basin. It's currently a basin. It will remain, and we are doing something slightly different in actually encouraging the split zoning to remain instead of cleaning it up. And I'll get into that with the next slide, or two slides away. The master plan land use table for a, a commercial district allows tourist commercial suburban. Primary uses are RV parks, lodges, resorts, and in the suburbanizing area casinos. And, let's see, RV parks, resorts, et cetera, type deal. This portion of the Traditions commercial subdivision is envisioned as a tourist-oriented location, and with the amenities proposed within the tentative commercial subdivision plan, this is an appropriate zoning for the proposed uses. So, looking at this, here is the Traditions commercial subdivision plan, which you all saw last year when this came forward. And it shows the phasing and conceptual layout for the commercial subdivision. The parcels under consideration today are in the lower left in the kind of light blue color. And the conceptual plan includes an RV park, casino, hotel, and associated amenities. The Zone Map Amendment is one step further for this, towards this conceptual plan. There will still need to be additional entitlements and or building and site permits before any construction can begin. So when we look at the zoning, you can see on the left where we have
One question for you. Can you go back on one slide? I'm looking, is that an access down there? Drawn in off the highway? What is that?
It does show that on the phasing It does show that on the phasing plan, but I don't know, I don't. The, the access, as I understand it, will be off the traditions Parkway. So this is an older plan that, that's been around for a while.
Okay, I just, if we can, we'll get rid of it off the plan so that we don't keep looking at that stuff. Thank you.
Stacy Higgins is here, and she just nodded that that is not a proposed access at this point. You're talking about, no, talking about this one right here.
Thank you.
Stacy, that can be removed for going forward in the future. Great. All right.
So that's not, when I looked at that, that's not like a gated emergency entrance or exit.
We're not to, I don't believe they're to the point of doing the full layout, but I don't believe, because there will be multiple entrances. You can get into this area from both Nevada Station Parkway and Traditions Parkway. So I can say as looking at it, when we see CUPs and ADRs and things come forth, without NDOT's approval or something, that that would not happen. But, yeah. Does that answer your question? Oh, okay, great. All right. So with the zoning, um, this is changing, um, the portion of twenty nine, APN twenty nine and all of APN zero one six. Um, this would be consistent with the commercial zoning adjacent to the north, south and east, just changing it to tourist commercial and is in alignment with the previously approved tentative commercial subdivision plans that were approved March of twenty twenty four. Um, the parcels to the north of twenty nine, oh, two nine are zoned as neighborhood residential with existing single family residences. The parcels to the east are undeveloped properties within the traditions commercial subdivision. There are also private residences on commercially zoned properties across highway fifty to the south. So as I said, I would get back to the northern portion of APN zero two nine. Currently has an existing detention basin, which serves the neighboring single family residences within Traditions Village One. Per the application, following this zone change, a boundary line adjustment will establish the detention pond on its own parcel to allow for ownership of the pond to be associated with the homeowners association for the adjacent single family residential uh, subdivision. So this will not be changing the character. It will also provide a nice buffer between those properties, and it will ensure that that remains as open space and that basin remains as part of the overall drainage plan. So, um, this, let's go back again. I'm gonna just add one more thing. So a, as unusual, we are recommending that this continues the split zoning of NR and TC at this point, knowing that a boundary line adjustment will come, which will clean that up. And it's, it is imperative to note that the proposed zone change and subsequent parcel boundary adjustment are not going to affect or change the detention basin capacity level of service or configuration in any way. And it will be cleaner to have that within the HOA's jurisdiction rather than part of the commercial subdivision. Thank you. Any questions on that? Okay. So moving forward findings, uh, chapter fifteen point two two oh five. Uh, I've gone through some of the, the highlights again. Um, again, we look at A, is it uh, consistent with the policies of the master plan? And it, it does fit. It does occur in an area that is served by or adjacent to areas with existing utilities to avoid distant and costly extensions. And it encourages development where public facilities exist or plan to accommodate. It is also following along with our already approved master plan for this area and the traditions commercial subdivision plan, uh, which is in final, is coming in or is in review for a final map. I believe, um, so they're wrapping that up. So we do have the traditions commercial subdivision final map um, coming in. So it doesn't introduce a new need for public services that are not already provided, and it is part and envisioned as part of the mass, the commercial subdivision plan. And as CS, it is, um, it doesn't introduce an unplanned or incompatible use to the area as we have seen. So this was heard also at the August twelfth, twenty twenty five planning commission. The application was approved unanimously toward a recommendation to this board. Um, I am here if you have any questions. So it's Stacy Higgins from Wood Rogers, and she has a presentation if there are additional questions, but um, unless you guys have detailed questions, she will forego that right now.
Do there any questions or comments? Do there any public comment? Seeing none, will entertain a motion.
Uh, based on findings A through C, I move that the board of county commissioners approves a request from Lucas Homes and Development LLC for a zoning map amendment to amend the zoning map designation from the title ten district of C two general commercial district to the title fifteen district of C TC dash S tourist commercial suburban for five point two one acre portion of one parcel located at three thousand highway fifty and for seventeen point zero four acre parcel located in the western quadrant of the intersection of highway fifty in Traditions Parkway and Dayton APNs zero one six dash four one dash ninety seven and zero two nine seven eighty two dash sixteen PLZ twenty twenty five zero four three.
Do we have a second? Second, we have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Castanelli. Those in favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. I do want to make a comment that I appreciate the allowed uses that, that chart that's in there. I believe Commissioner Hendricks asked for it, and I really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner.
Number twelve, twelve A for presentation on an update on the recent and ongoing activities related to the fluent disposal capacity of the Aspen Creek Rapid Infiltration Basins. Count Sinclair.
Morning Commissioner Sean Sinclair, interim utility director for the record. I just wanted to provide you with a update from the, the last update you received was from the previous director on May fifteenth. So we just have a quick slideshow. Again, the, the, the last time you guys were updated was on May fifteenth by previous director Burketa. So I just want to kind of follow up and let you guys know what we've been doing since May fifteenth. As the county manager spoke about earlier, we've, we've had several meetings with NDP on June twenty second. We went, we met with NDP and staff demonstrated adequate disposal capacity following Dow's June tenth report showing point five MGD million gallons a day capacity for the Aspen Creek, Creek Rib Site. NDP wa- uh, wanted monitor, monitoring data through the end of July to make a decision on map review. We met again on August nineteenth. That July data showed affluent quality meeting the discharge permit for groundwater permit and groundwater nitrogen trending down, which we've been having some issues at the, the monitoring wells at the Aspen Creek site. So we're, we're starting to see that come down. Uh, NDP has asked for a formal memo and modification to the will serve letter from staff to, before they can resume reviewing and approving the, um, will serve letters or signing final maps. As the county manager spoke about a little bit ago, last Thursday, the, the state has agreed to start issuing or signing final maps again. They've accepted our point five MGD capacity for the Aspen Creek ribs. They've accepted our modification to our will serve, and we, we presented them a memo basically showing a, a ticker of our, our uh, capacity with each subdivision that comes down. Um, so they, they've moved forward with signing, allowing us to, to sign will serves. And the county will continue to comply with the bi-weekly monitoring report data that we're submitting to them. So they, they're up to speed on everything we have going on, including meeting minutes from the plant expansion. Uh, some of our goals moving forward, so now that we're, we've kind of heard a little hurdle with the, the final maps and, and, and um, will serve issue. So we have our six to twelve month goal currently is to increase effluent pumping in the south plant to south plant and the golf course, kind of limited what we can send up there right now due to some, uh, pump issues and choke down pipe under the river. Actually cruised up potholing, uh, uh, we have a empty line under the river right now that we're looking at. Maybe we can possibly use that to get more capacity at the south plant. We're evaluating increasing the capacity at the existing ribs at south plant. Uh, we're looking at the feasibility of converting one of the storage ponds at south plant into a rib. We have a massive storage pond up there. Want to see if we can turn that into a rib. Um, and we're evaluating converting two abandoned lagoons into ribs. If you guys have ever been up there, there's a burn pit, and there's a pit that's just full of dirt. We want to see if we can turn those into ribs. Before we do that, we're going to meet, the state's had some, their cyber attack issues. We've been trying to coordinate a meeting with them to make sure before we go down that road that that's even something permitting wise that we can achieve. And also working with the golf course to see if we can't work together with them and see if they can leave some of those levels at different spots where if we get into a problem, we should send them additional effluent. One to four year goals, develop a program to basically for contractors, instead of using hydrant meters, using effluent for dust control. Uh, one interesting thing in twenty twenty four, the dust control, everything we use through hydrant meters, which is potable water, was twenty four million gallons. So it doesn't solve the problem, but it would certainly help. So it's just something we're looking at, maybe uh, go into more of a effluent based uh, water, effluent water for contractors and dust control. Uh, construct additional ribs at the Aspen Creek site. We have three, uh, al- alternatives under consideration, basically a new rib to the south, east or west, and that's something where we have our engineer looking at right now. Uh, explore complete new sites and, um, and also look at, uh, discharging effluent into the Carson River. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions? All right, Commissioner Jacobson, and then we'll, oh, I'm sorry. Appreciate, Mr. Sinclair, appreciate your hard work, hitting the ground running in your new position. I know you've been here for years and, uh, Mr. Workman. Was nice to hear from him at the beginning of the meeting. So. That's all I have. Commissioner Castanelli.
Oh, thank you, Chair. And, uh, yeah, those were nice words. Mr. Workman, known him for a long time, so it means a lot. But, um, the, uh, effluent line currently that goes up uh, to Dayton Golf Course, what size is that line? Do you know offhand? It's only a six inch.
It's a six. And unfortunately, under the river, it was HDPE, so it has a, a greater wall thickness. So we have a choke point under there, so it's four inch under the river. So we have an old abandoned line that we're looking to see if we can maybe connect those two together to get additional capacity up there. Or, and I, I think I skipped over in my presentation, or there, there is an alternative, maybe we just shoot a new line into the river.
Having a, a secondary, using both, yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? And thank you, Mr. Sinclair, and we can move on to thirteen A for possible action. Prove a subscription agreement between Lyon County and Solus Guard for two two thousand seventy four dollars and thirty five cents to purchase panic button devices and an annual subscription service to be grant funded through fiscal year twenty six, healthy Nevada respite and the Sam Shaw Youth Most C three funding, and to authorize the human services director to sign. It's Holmes, Dr. Holmes.
Good morning, Sheila Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services. For the record, we have been actively working on a precautionary safety solution for staff that go into homes, working with individuals that are at a higher risk for behavioral health concerns. And pan- these panic buttons through Solus Guard, uh, are inconspicuous. They're tiny little buttons that could be on our bracelet, or could be on a necklace, or be on our staff's, um, lanyards that allow quick access that do first a call to our offices to let them know that they've activated it and a secondary call to nine one one. We're using grant funds to purchase them, and they are only for individuals who are going out without deputy support. So our C three crisis team does go out to calls where deputies are present sometimes, but not always. And so this just gives an additional precautionary safety measure for staff that are going into the community or going into homes, working with individuals that are potentially in active crisis.
Do we have any questions or comments on the board? Any public comment? Seeing none online, seeing none in the room, bring it back for a motion.
Move to approve a subscription agreement between Lyon County and Solus Guard for two thousand seventy four dollars and thirty five cents to purchase panic button devices and an annual subscription service to be grant funded through FY twenty six, healthy Nevada, but despite and Sam Shaw Youth Most funding and to authorize human services director to sign.
Second, we have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Hockaday. Those in favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. Okay, we're gonna skip fifteen. I mean fourteen. So we'll go on to eighteen, agenda request. Do we have any agenda requests? Starting with Commissioner Jacobson.
Um, yeah, and, um, in the future, um, I would like to get Oscar Delgado to present on the Community Health Alliance in Masser County, just mainly for information for our county. And that, that's not something that has to happen overnight, obviously, but somewhere down the road, I think, uh, after walking through a couple of different facilities, what, what that brought, uh, to some of our underserved folks in the county will be something that may be beneficial for sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Hendricks. Commissioner Castanelli.
Uh, yes, for the commissioners that might have any input for traffic control. For instance, I have for Smith Valley, Mason Valley, you know, changes in speed signs, uh, warning signs, things such as that. If you do, you have, maybe get them to me. I'll consolidate them on an agenda item so that we can approve any of the extra cost for signs, and then I will turn that into the county manager.
And the asking line county manager, just want to provide some clarification. Actually, you should send them to me, so we're not, uh, creating an open meeting situation.
That's fine.
Thank you, uh, starting backwards, Commissioner Hockaday will come back across, Commissioner comments. You have any comments? No, no, Commissioner Castanelli.
Not at this time.
Commissioner Hendricks.
I did just want to thank our emergency, uh, management team and our first responders for the work that they did last week during all the flooding.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson, and I have none. Public participation. No action, we take on any item until there's properly agendas and anticipated the public participation we held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda, citizens wishing to speak. During public participation, I ask to state the name for the record, and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item, but before the board takes any action. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none online or in the room, we will take a recess till eleven o'clock and address the time certain. So it's eleven o'clock, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Robin Titus.
All right, everybody, let's see here. I'm trying to get this all worked out. I was muted and now I'm unmuted, so, uh, we'll get called to order. Are you able to hear me loud and clear there?
Yes.
Thank goodness for Starlink. I'm up in northeastern, uh, Elko County on my son's Archie Bull elk tag. So, um, Starlink is an amazing thing, and I'm able to sign in. I'm trying to get on the video. But in the meantime, we'll call this meeting of the Lyon County Board of Health, um, to start and, and we will take roll call. Um, first, I, I've seen all the commissioners there in person. Um, is that correct in the sheriff?
That's correct. Yes.
Very good. So we have full participation, uh, roll call, and then now we'll go to agenda item number fifteen, which is public participation. I'm seeing a couple backs of a couple heads, but I can't tell if there's any public in the room.
There's no, nothing in the room, nothing online.
Perfect. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and call this, um, then regular agenda. I'd like to go ahead and move, uh, agenda item number sixteen B, which is a presentation of the newly created Nevada Health Authority. Agenda item number sixteen B, which is a presentation of the newly created Nevada Health Authority. Um, to the first item and we'll skip over A. So um, if uh, somebody, a member from the Nevada Health Authority is either there, Stacy Weeks or her appointee. Uh, I'd like to begin with them.
Are they on my name?
Here I am. Hi, everybody. Sorry, I'm trying to get my video started. This is Melinda Southard with the Nevada Health Authority. Thank you, Dr. Titus, for the introduction and appreciate you moving the agenda item forward. Cannot get my video to start. I apologize.
And mine's not starting either, so.
And I'm trying to share my screen as well. So if somebody could grant me sharing opportunity, that would be great.
You should be good to go.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Looks good, Linda.
Yay. All right. Well, good morning, everyone. Uh, thank you so much for inviting us to um, present to you all today. We're really excited to share with you some. Updates from the Nevada Health Authority. And my name is Melinda Southard. I serve as a Deputy Director for the Nevada Health Authority uh, for Community Engagement and Workforce Development. So today we want to provide some updates on the Nevada Health Authority as well as the uh, Rural Health Transformation Program. And then the Medicaid County Match Invoicing. So first of all, the launch of the Nevada Health Authority. So um, as you guys know, the uh, Senate Bill four ninety four um, implemented the Nevada Health Authority for the state. Um, it has been quite the sprint um, in getting the Health Authority up and running, but I feel like. Everything is moving smoothly now or as smoothly as it can be with our websites being down. Um, but you know, really excited to um, embark on this new adventure with the Nevada Health Authority. And I'll go into a little bit more detail on what the Health Authority um, encompasses. So the why behind the Nevada Health Authority. Um, our vision for this agency is for a healthy, thriving Nevada where healthcare is affordable and reliable for all. Um, we have a very strong mission statement um, that basically. Is summed up by uh, Governor Joe Lombardo in, you know, that Nevada will capitalize on its strong purchasing power. When it comes to health insurance, really work to get a better deal for taxpayers. All while offering better insurance options for eligible Nevadans. And we hold strong to the values of public service, physical discipline and accountable leadership within the Nevada Health Authority. So what makes up the Nevada Health Authority? So there are four main components. Um, that all go into this agency. So first we have. The Public Employees Benefits Program, uh, which is the uh, health insurer agency for all um, state employees. Uh, then we have the Nevada Health Link, which is otherwise known as the Silver State Health Insurance Exchange. Uh, which connects Nevadans to um, other health insurance options. And then we have Nevada Medicaid. Um, at which I'm sure you all are uh, familiar with. Um, and then we also have the newest um, Nevada born state plans. That are a component of the Nevada Health Authority and these are qualified health plans. That will be offered on the Nevada Health Link for purchase. Uh, this next open enrollment period, which I believe starts October first. So just giving kind of an overview of, you know, the, the um. The change, I guess, from Senate Bill four ninety four. So. We used to have the Department of Health and Human Services and now we've kind of morphed into two agencies. So we have the Department of Human Services, which um. Basically encompasses still the Division of Child and Family Services, the Division of Public and Behavioral Health. Uh, the Division of Social Services and Aging and Disability Services. And as you can see with those asterisks there, um, some of the components. Of those divisions have been moved into the new Nevada Health Authority. So from Public and Behavioral Health, um, the healthcare licensing and compliance, so. Uh, the Bureau of Healthcare Quality and Compliance uh, has moved over to the Nevada Health Authority. Uh, within the Social Services Division. We now have the eligibility um, policy is living with Nevada Health Authority. And then Aging and Disability Services, uh, we did receive some staff. That are uh, performing quality assurance reviews on our home and community-based services programs. And then within the Nevada Health Authority, um, as I had mentioned before. We have uh, Nevada Medicaid, which was formerly the Division of Healthcare um. Financing Policy. And then uh, we have some, a new division, the con- the Division of Consumer Health Services, which is where. The exchange will live, uh, along with the Battleborn State Plans. And of course, we have Public Employee Benefits Program and then uh, the Division of Healthcare Purchasing and Compliance. So just wanted to give you all a snapshot of the. Executive Leadership Team here at the Nevada Health Authority. So our fearless leader is the uh, Director Stacy Weeks. And um, and then she has comprised a director's office um, with. Deputy Director Sandy Rubelid, who serves as our Chief Enterprise I T Officer. Uh, we are currently um, hiring for the Chief of Staff position. And then we have Lynette Aaron, who serves as Deputy Director for Healthcare Financing and Budgets. And then myself there, uh, Deputy for Community Engagement, Workforce Development. And then we have the four divisions, so the Division Administrators. Um, so we have Todd Rich, who's the Administrator for Healthcare Purchasing and Compliance, Jennifer Crepp. The Administrator for Consumer Health Services, Teresa Carston. Serves as the Executive Officer for the Public Employee Benefits Program. And Ann Jensen serves as the Administrator for Nevada Medical. So some of the strategic goals and guideposts to. Achieve our mission at the Nevada Health Authority. Um, one of the primary goals. Is to improve the state's performance on key health indicators. As you know, our scorecard for Nevada in terms of healthcare is not really where we want it to be. So um, one of the primary focuses, you know, in the next. Um, I would say our, our initial term as a Nevada um, Health Authority is to improve those performance on those key health indicators. Especially surrounding internal health, um, access and affordability of healthcare. Quality and prevention and mental health access and improving mental health outcomes. Um, also, we will strive to increase the financial sustainability of our coverage programs. Expand the capacity of the state's healthcare workforce to meet the needs. And of course, driving better value coordination and innovation in healthcare. Um, here, I just kind of wanted to show you guys what. You know, the Nevada Health Authority footprint is. Um, so. One in three Nevadans are actually covered by Nevada Health Authority Administered Program, which is quite a bit. Um, so we have over eight hundred thousand are covered by Medicaid and the Children's Health Insurance Program. Over a hundred and ten thousand um, can access affordable coverage through the Nevada Health Link. And over seventy thousand public employees and their families are covered through the Public Employees Benefits Program. And then importantly, in twenty twenty three, one in two births in Nevada were covered by Nevada Medicaid. So we really have. Quite an opportunity to make a big impact and to make that a positive impact in healthcare. So how do we get from here to there? And I would say that the way that we do that is we're reimagining. Reimagining how we can cover folks in Nevada and um, and do a really great job at it. So right now, reimagining healthcare for providers. So today's scenario. Today you have numerous ways to submit those prior authorizations. Um, there are multiple different quality metrics for various programs. They all have different metrics. Uh, we have different credentialing processes across our markets, so Medicaid, Medicare, private market, um, employer coverage, et cetera. Uh, and then there's also very many ways to enroll or contract to get paid by carriers. Um, so the list goes on with that one. Like, oh, that's crazy today. So. Where we want to get, right? We want to get to, yes. Uh, so the Nevada Health Authority wants to be the one stop shop for providers. We want to have one enrollment process. One credentialing process. Same quality and value-based payment programs across all of our programs. The same reporting standards. Same forms and timelines. You don't have to fill out five different forms to get. Something accomplished and we want to do this across all the markets under the Nevada Health Authority. Again, reimagining care for Nevadans. So right now. Uh, there is a stigma associated with in-person caseworker model. There are complicated forms that people have to fill out. Lengthy applications. There's multiple doors that you can find online to try to apply for different programs. Um, unfortunately, there's no real-time eligibility right now. Uh, there's no plan shopping or network comparison. Um, no clear bridge to coverage when ineligible for Medicaid. So when we reimagine care for Nevadans, again, we want that one stop shop for coverage. For people who shop for their own health insurance. So. Um, our goal is to have what's called a Medicaid Express. So it's going to be real-time eligibility and enrollment um, through the exchange. And um, if you're eligible for private coverage, you will be moved through the experience on the exchange. So say somebody comes. To apply for Medicaid, they're not eligible for Medicaid, but at that same website, they can apply for coverage through the exchange. You can compare and select the plans, see their provider networks and of course, view the plans, quality scores all online there. And then reimagining state healthcare purchasing. So we're looking at a new healthcare purchasing strategy. To really align certain contracts and requirements across markets. Uh, with those similar carriers or vendors for similar services. This really would allow the state uh, to better leverage its position to negotiate better deals, which means lower costs in healthcare services. Um, and it really provides for greater efficiencies and simplifies programs for both consumers and providers. Now I want to transition over to the new rural uh, transformation grant. So as you guys know, the um, one big beautiful bill act um, actually established a new. Federal Grant Program called the Rural Health Transformation Program. Uh, this program operates is fifty billion dollars available across all fifty states over the course of five years. To help to mitigate some of those effects of changes to Medicaid financing for our rural hospitals and providers. Um, it is a one-time application process. So um, we won't have to reapply every year for this, but we do have one shot. Um, and then all applications have to be approved or denied no later than the end of this calendar year, which um, is going to be a sprint. So CMS has not released the guidance. On applying for these funds just yet, but I have received word that. We are anticipating for that notice of funding opportunity to come out to this week. And if grants.gov is any indication, it looks like it's set to be posted tomorrow. So fingers crossed. Um, the Nevada Health Authority is going to develop a strategy for the state to apply in coordination with stakeholders. We know how important it is um. For stakeholder and engaging with the community and um, that is. A primary focus of putting together this, this application. So we have a online survey that we've asked for folks to provide input. On where the state should prioritize funding in this application to support rural Nevada. Um, the survey link itself does work, so I will send a copy of these slides um, after the fact so that you guys can access the survey. And then we ask for all comments due by September twenty second. Unfortunately, our Rural Health Transformation Program webpage is down at the moment, but. Once it's available, we do have a very nice webpage that also includes the survey. And then we will be hosting a public workshop on October second. At two P M. So just ask that you save the date in your calendar for that. We will be sending out. A formal agenda and meeting information um, shortly, uh, and I will be sure that's shared. Uh, with the um, the Naco group as well, so that you guys all have a copy of that. Um, part of the grant application will be that the state has to provide a rural transformation plan. This plan has to include strategies to improve access and healthcare outcomes. Of rural residents prioritize the use of new technologies. Um, you know, strengthen those strategic partnerships, enhance healthcare provider retention in rural areas. And of course, outline strategies to manage long-term financial solvency of rural hospitals. So with the Rural Health Transformation Grant, um. We have to pick a minimum of three of these buckets. Um, the five at the top are the five strategic goals that are listed in the bill itself. Um, and the three buckets that are a minimum requirement can be. You know, three of the strategic goals, or they can include the sub-buckets um, beneath any one of those strategic goals. So um, this. Also has the potential to change when, once the notice of funding opportunity comes out. Um, because the bill itself did allow the um, CMS Administrator. To include additional areas that they would like the state to focus on as well. So we're just waiting that. Initial guidance and we'll see what happens after that. Okay, so next I'm going to turn it over to Lynette Aaron. Um, to provide some information for you all about the County Match Invoicing Program. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And I hope that Lynette is able to share first for you. Lynette, are you on? Oh, you're probably having trouble being unmuted.
Thank you, Melinda. Yes, I did have that problem. Hi, everyone. Hi, Dr. Titus. Thank you so much for making uh, time and add, adding us to your agenda. I do have quite a bit of slides. Um, I'll try to go through them as efficiently as possible. Um, let me, if you don't mind, if I can steal the screen.
Are you able to help her down there?
Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yep, looks good. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Um, hi, everyone. My name is Lynette Aaron. I am the Deputy Director of Healthcare Financing and Budgets. So I oversee all of the Fiscal Services Unit within the Nevada Health Authority. I do have on the line, uh, Jenna Rogers. She's a Management Analyst two. Over supplemental reimbursement unit. She is a program analyst specific to the County Match Program. As well as I have Melissa Madera. She's a Management Analyst four. She's the um, supervisor over the Provider Tax Unit that can. Uh, assist with any maybe uh, claims questions that you guys have, may have on the data. All right. So the County Match Invoicing Process. So each county receives a monthly invoice from the Nevada Health Authority based on the following population groups. Uh, there are three. There is the County Match Population Group between a hundred forty-two and a hundred fifty-five percent of the federal benefit rate. As well as the County Match Population uh, with the federal benefit rate between a hundred fifty-six. Percent to three hundred percent. And then we have what we call our waiver population. These are people that are using the Home and Community-Based Services Waiver. Um, as well as the invoice. That we provide that is uploaded through a, the S F T P portal. It includes a workbook that consists of the following tabs. The. The first tab is the invoice explanation. The second is the County F S R. Third is the invoice. Fourth is the claims and fifth is the eligibility tab. And so we'll go into detail uh, regarding these uh. Five different components of the invoices. Um, but first we will talk about eligibility. Um, I apologize, I did not update this slide. Um, the Division of Welfare and Supportive Services through the twenty twenty-five Legislative Session. Is now called the Division of Supportive, um, Division of Supportive Services under the Department of Health and Human Services. But they are the one, they are the division that determines the members that's eligible for the County Match Program. The member becomes eligible if they have been admitted to a hospital or skilled intermediate nursing facility for not less than. or skilled intermediate nursing facility for not less than thirty consecutive days. Um, the member does need to meet the eligibility requirements as previously stated before, um, with those three population groups, the County Match of one forty-two to one fifty-five, the one fifty-six to three hundred percent, and then the waiver population. Okay, so the monthly invoice. So these are, this is just a snapshot of what the invoice looks like that every county receives. We did, um, gray out, um, some P I I information on there, um, for the particular county that we use as the example. Um, and so we will go through in the next few slides, all of the different, um, components of this invoice. So the medical claims billing. So the medical claims billing, the month, this shows the monthly claims paid through M M I S, which is our fiscal agent, uh, to providers who provide services to county indigent recipients. The county share percentage is equal to one minus the federal medical assistance percentage. Um, F map is the share of medical costs paid by the federal government. And then S map is the state share of medical costs paid by either the state or county. And obviously, in this particular in- instance for the County Match Program, the, the S map would be the county share of those costs. Um, so the county share of the medical claims payment is equal to the total of the medical claims payments times the current quarterly, um, S map. And so in this example here, we can see that the total medical claims payment is a hundred forty-eight thousand dollars. And the current S map for the, for that particular quarter is thirty-nine point seven eight percent. And so the, the share for the county is only about fifty-nine thousand dollars. All right. So the next piece is the Medicare Part D premiums. These are required payments for Medicare Part D coverage for county indigent recipients who are duly eligible. So they, um, are eligible for both Medicaid and Medicare. So Part D payments equals the number of dual eligibles times the Part D per capita payment. Part D costs are funded one hundred percent by the county. The state is unable to draw down federal funds to pay a portion of these costs. Um, so in this example, we have here the Part D per capita payment is a hundred seventy-seven dollars and forty-six cents. This is set by the feds. And, um, for this particular month, the number of dual eligibles was twenty-four. So the one seventy-seven forty-six is multiplied by twenty-four to get the total for the month for the county, which is about forty-three hundred dollars. And that is at a hundred percent. All right, and the next component on the County Match Invoice is the Medicare Part B premiums. Um, the premium payments for county indigent recipients who must buy into Medicare Part B. Um, the county share of Part B payments equals the total Part B payments times a current core S map percentage. Uh, so this is similar to the medical claims cost, and we are able to draw down federal funds to help offset some of those costs for the counties. And so in this example, the total Medicare Part B premiums was forty-four hundred dollars, but the cur, um, the county share was only forty percent, which leaves, um, the amount for the county to pay about roughly eighteen hundred dollars. All right, and then so the medical services subtotal. The medical services subtotal consists of the medical claims payments, the Medicare Part D premiums, and the Medicare Part B premiums, which we had gone over. Um, so this is an example of what we will call the F S R. That is also included in your guys' invoice packet, which shows down here, down below, with the medical service cost total of sixty-four thousand. That includes the county share of the medical service costs you hear, oh, I'm sorry, that you see here of the fifty-nine thousand, plus your Medicare Part D premiums of forty-three hundred dollars, and then your Medicare Part B premiums of eighteen hundred dollars. All right, the next component, um, to the County Match Invoice is the Administration Costs. So the administration cost consists of the county share for the Nevada Health Authority's administration of the program, as well as our fiscal agent costs, um, and our sister agency, the Division of Supportive Services, for their administration costs as well, um, since they are in charge of eligibility. It's approx, the administration cost represents approximately two percent of the total cost for each county. Um, it does also include the fixed and variable costs for claims processing, as well as I had stated earlier, the administrative fee for the Division of Supportive Services eligibility costs. All right, the next piece of the invoice is the Medical Services Credits. This is also otherwise known as the Medicaid Estate Recovery Credits. These are funds that are recovered from deceased Medicaid recipients, um, for medical services that they had received. Um, the counties do pay a portion of the MRR admin fee for the month the credit is received. Um, counties receive a percent of that MRR credit to offset the invoice costs. And so, for example, the county share of the MRR credits is going to be equal to the total MRR credits times the current quarterly, um, S map. And so in this example here, and I apologize, I didn't have the screenshot of the S map percentage, but the total Medicaid estate recoveries was thirteen thousand dollars. And at that time, the S map was about forty percent. And so the credit for the county was about.
I think.
All right.
We lost you for a little. Yeah, we lost you for a little bit. You're back, but that's good.
All right, thank you. All right, so the next piece is a total billing for the current month. So the total billing for the current month, this includes medical services total for all populations. Um, so again, that's the one hundred fifty-six to three hundred percent, the one forty-two to, um, one fifty-six, and then the waiver participants, as well as it includes the medical claims, Part D and Medicare Part B, um, and then the administration costs and medical services costs that we, um, had just gone over. And so, um, in this example, with all of those components, the total bill for this county was roughly ninety-seven thousand dollars. All right, so the final invoice amount takes into account, um, a few additional components. Um, the first piece is the balance forward. This is the current amount owed plus the balance due from prior months. So for example, if a county only paid a portion of the invoice from the prior year, that portion that was left unpaid would be included in that balance forward. Uh, um, the payments year-to-date is the total payments received for the current fiscal year. Um, and then the next component, the State Fiscal Year, um, Estimated Eight-Cent Cap. This is the maximum amount that can be charged to a rural county per statute. Um, and then the cap room is the balance forward amount plus the payments, uh, year-to-date. Amount is the balance forward plus the eight, estimated eight-cent cap. Um, the amount that's listed in the eight-cent cap that has been met, um, credit to expenditures over the cap. All right, the next piece is the Claims Tab. So this is, um, in that workbook, uh, you will also receive, uh, a tab that's labeled Claims. This shows you the eligible member's monthly ca, claims data, which is extracted through our M M I S system. The aid category here, um, identifies the populi, population group for the member's medical services costs. And then in this next column here, the total cost coverage of Mars is a total cost per claim per member. This includes a federal's, federal share, as well as the state share and/or county share of those costs. Um, this, um, screenshot, though, is an abbreviation of what you guys would typically see in your guys' packet, um, and that's just because there is patient percent, protected data in here. So as you can see here on the person I D, that information was zeroed out, as well as the claim form I D. But this kind of gives you, um, a good overview of the different components in that Claims Tab. Um, the next tab that you guys receive in that workbook is cons, is called the Eligibility Tab. The Eligibility Tab is provided by the Division of Supportive Services. Um, and again, the aid code identifies a population group for each eligible member in the County Match Program. The Eligibility Tab also provides the county, um, the last name and first name, the recipient I D, aid code, federal benefit rate percentage, um, the population, the eligibility month, and the Part B build amount and Part D amount. All right, um, and then the contact information I put on here. So if you guys have any County Match invoice questions, please, um, uh, please reach out to Jenna Rogers, uh, within the Nevada Health Authority. Her e, email is listed here. And then if you have any eligibility and member application questions, please reach out to Yvonne Ruiz. She is, um, with the Division of Supportive Services. And then with that, uh, are there any questions?
So, uh, Lynette, thank you for, for that. That's a lot of information, and it's always very complicated, um, reimbursement. And, and I think it's a good, I'm not sure how many, how much information on the rest of members of the board had on this topic. Again, it's very convoluted and complicated. Um, do, do any members have, uh, questions?
Um, yes, Senator Titus, thank you. Uh, ladies, uh, and this could be from the Southern, uh, Ms. Aaron or Ms. Rogers. This is Commissioner Jacobson. So ranking fifty-first, I can assume that's out of fifty-one?
I'm sorry, Dr. Titus, I didn't hear the question.
So, um, Commissioner Jacobson wants to know if, uh, if we rank, uh, fifty-first is out out of fifty-one, uh, uh, rankings?
In, in what area? I think this might be a question to Melinda.
Two of them were ranked fifty-first. Another one was like forty-seventh, maybe another one was forty-sixth. Is that out of fifty-one?
I.
Melinda, do you?
I can answer that, yes. That's out of fifty-one, which would be, um, I think you're, they include Puerto Rico, uh, in that.
Or B C.
Or B C, yeah.
Um, okay. I, I don't know if the lady, uh, ladies can hear or not. Um, I'm assuming our, our rural areas do not stack up very well as well. So, uh, I'm not going to get into what goes into each of those rankings, but, um, something, uh, that, that kind of, I, I went to watch the county and checked out was the Community Health Alliance. Are you ladies familiar with that model?
Uh, this is Melinda Southard. I've heard of the Community Health Alliance. Um, would you like us to, uh, reach out to them in a, a specific way with this application?
No, I'm just, it was something like, I guess where I'm going is the Community Health Alliance. It seems like Lion County would be, and, and all of Nevada would be primed for some of that big blow money, uh, seeming something that seemingly lasts. And I was just wondering, um, if the Community Health Alliance, kind of a one-stop shop, where they can get medical, dental, whatever else, even food bank stuff there. Um, is that something that uh, is helping on the rankings and something that might benefit Lion County, or is that model not the, what, kind of what's going on here? I'm, I'm curious.
Thank you, Commissioner. Melinda Southard, for the record. Um, you know, we, we have a lot of input from the stakeholders from across the state, um, for, you know, how to best move the needle on these rankings. Um, and, you know, appreciate working with all of our stakeholders on that. Um, and it, you know, these, these national surveys are a little complex at times. Sometimes they don't go to the right person to get the, um, up-to-date data. And so, you know, we're working hard to change that. Um, and I do see what you're saying with that type of a model, where it's kind of a one-stop shop. Um, and we are working with the Nevada Primary Care Association and all of our federally qualified health centers, um, on this application as well. Um, I did hear from CMS yesterday that they are looking for all fifty states to apply for these funds. And they're looking for all fifty states to have a successful application. So that's kind of a good thing in, in my world. I'm thinking that, you know, at least the, um, what is that? So it'd be twenty-five billion spread across fifty states. Um, so five hundred million at least, um, to Nevada to, to support, um, these types of initiatives. And I will send that survey link, um, in the PowerPoint to you all later so that you can follow up. And please do put your, um, your thoughts and input in that survey link, and we will take all of that and then present it at that public workshop on October second.
Commissioner Jacobson, do you have any further questions?
We really couldn't understand much what was said, so, um, but, um, I know that Health Alliance, for example, takes any and all server, um, medical providers from Medicaid and Medicare, whatever your, whatever, they will accept it all, which is, I know, a frustration for people in Lion County, at least the ones I talked to, is, oh, yeah, we could go to the emergency room in front of me, but, uh, it's not our provider, so we can't go there. Um, and, uh, I guess are there any changes down the road coming on, um, just single provider and you've kind of locked in on where you can, you can't go? Or is that not something that you ladies should deal with?
Yeah, Melinda Southard, for the record, this is absolutely something that, you know, we thought about, and I've experienced that personally, um, in not having access to the provider in my area. Um, so it is a priority for the state. And, um, however, we can move that needle to get greater, greater access in rural Nevada is, uh, very important.
I think, um, if I might jump in, Commissioner, uh, um, and Melinda, I think one of the goals that I'm hearing and I hope to see from, um, this new health authority is you mentioned, Melinda, early on about streaming, streaming, um, licensure and application. So the, the, the providers such as the Community Health Alliance, um, limiting how much time it takes for them to get prior authorization, making sure that folks can go and see them. And I, I'm anxious to hear when we talk about the, when we get to the Silver Summit Managed Care Organization and some of these new providers for Medicaid, making sure, as Commissioner Jacobson's concerned, that, and, and you have mentioned, Melinda, that, uh, constituents, folks, uh, county members, uh, citizens who are on these programs can go wherever they need to. And that's one of the big, uh, issues that we hear and I'm hearing from Commissioner Jacobson is that folks can't go there, um, because they're not providers. And so hopefully, some of this access to, to, you know, you have said in these programs, no wrong door many times. But then again, that's not the same if the provider doesn't sign up for these programs. So hopefully, um, you, you encourage providers to sign up, that the, you get more providers, you use a term like workforce development. We want to make sure that that happens, that you indeed do streamline. Um, and it's just not talk when you streamline licensure, going on to become a Medicaid, Medicaid provider. We want to make sure that there's no obstacles there. And then that prior authorization, um, that these prior, that these, uh, providers have to go through for their patients. Um, it's all of a concern and part of contributing the, the fact of providers don't want to be on Medicaid, let alone just, you know, the reimbursement issue. So hopefully, some of that will get addressed.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Senator Titus. That was very, very nice way to sum it all up, and I fully agree with all of that. And yes, it is not just talk. We are, um, taking actionable steps forward to streamline that process for providers and make things a lot easier for providers to, um, to provide their services and get reimbursed, um, in a timely fashion.
The other question I have for the, uh, the new Rural Transformation Grant, which is the first I'm hearing about this, so thank you for, uh, presenting that today. Um, well, CMS is going to require Well, CMS is going to require any kind of county match or any match from the state? Being on the budget committees, it makes me really nervous. So is this just going to be grants and there's no requirement for any state or county match?
Yes, that is the super exciting thing about this grant is there is no match requirement.
Okay, very good. Does anybody else have any questions? Well, hearing none, I just, again, do you have that, the, the program that you just shared with everybody, Lynette? You have that, I'm sure that the, the county, Lyon County has a copy of that for Lyon County already. Josh Foley or whoever receives that, or Shayla, do you, do you see that? Who actually sees Lyon County's true numbers?
Dr. Titus, this is Shayla Holmes, for the record. Lyon County Human Services has access to that SFTP site and we download that monthly and do our best to review it for accuracy and then submit for payment.
Perfect. And then I have one other question. Thank you to, to Melinda and to Lynette. Both of you have mentioned, and it's no secret, that the state's internet system and has been hacked and wanting to make sure anybody that's on the phone today or anybody in the room wondering about services, were any of the Medicaid services, whether reimbursement for the providers or coverage for, application for patients or families? And the SNAP benefits and CHIP benefits and all of those, have any of those been interrupted?
Thanks for the question, Dr. Titus. Melinda Sutherland, for the record. No, no services have been impacted by the outage. You know, Medicaid members and all the social services members are still able to access all of those services as they would. And payments to providers have also not been impacted. We do have a list of communication, ways to communicate with our team that I can also send to Shayla to send out to this group so that you guys maintain that piece of information. But yes, like we have, all access to services are available and up and running. It's just, it's the websites.
Thank you. And the other question I final, so there's been some concern in the media regarding personal information that may have been hacked. Just reassurance from you that those folks who may have had a Medicaid application or any of those numbers, you were careful today about taking out numbers. But just reassurance to anybody on the line or, and to our commissioners, that any personal information has not been stolen?
Thanks for the question. I, I don't have the information on that, but our Governor's Office of Technology has noted that personal information may have been impacted. I just don't have the details on that. I apologize. But I can just assure you that nothing of urgent notice has come to my attention.
All right, very good. I just wanted to make sure, and we'll, we'll continue with the Governor's Office, but wanted to make sure since we're on this topic. Anybody else have any questions? And I apologize that you haven't been able to hear some of this, commissioners. Hopefully you were able to hear this last discussion. Well, if everybody's good, well, thank you all for being on and we'll go to next agenda item, 16A. A presentation from Silver Summit Managed Care Organization that will be serving Lyon County residents starting January of number of 26. And is Nicole King on the line? So I see a screen sharing, but I don't hear anything. Commissioners, can you hear anything?
No. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Are you still there?
Yes, yes.
Oh, there we go. All right.
King is here. She's trying to unmute herself.
Okay.
Just in the effort of time, Nikki, while she's working on unmuting herself, my name is Allison Hoover. I'm the Director of Network Development and Maintenance for Silver Summit Health Plan. Senator, shall we go ahead and get started?
Yes, please.
Yeah, we can go ahead. Wonderful.
Lots of information, so better move forward.
Exactly, exactly. Wonderful. And would like to have just a few minutes for some questions too, so that's great.
Allison, she's trying to unmute, but they, it's key, it's telling her the host needs to unmute her.
Not a problem, Janie. I, I think I'm good. If you want to go ahead and go to the next slide?
Sure.
You have top, Janie Ruth.
There we go. Here's our agenda. So we'll go ahead and, and just do some introductions. Again, I'm Allison Hoover. I am a native Nevadan and have worked in managed care for about 30 years in Nevada. So very excited to be here today and have this opportunity. Thank you. Nicole King or Nikki King is our Vice President of Government and Community Relations. She herself is a native Nevadaan. So, so she comes on, I'm sure she can introduce herself. And then in our presentation today as well, Christina Galan will be presenting some of the, the roadshow items that we have to share with you today. So, Janie, go ahead.
Allison, if I may interrupt, what is Nicole's username, participant ID?
Nicole King. Is that what she is listed as? Let's look here.
I don't see.
Janie, is she one of the CN numbers? 205727? Or the CN 330191?
Oh, here I am.
Oh, there you are.
Lovely. There I am.
Lovely. All right.
So, and I, if someone could allow me to have my video too, that would be extraordinarily wonderful. But if not, I will just continue forward. Thank you, Allison, for taking over. I apologize. I was not given the control to be able to unmute myself. So Silver Summit Health Plan, we have been a Nevada Medicaid provider since 2017. And we are so excited that we were selected to expand our services to be one of two providers that serve rural Nevada. Next slide, Janie. Throughout this presentation, we are going to explain the benefits of managed care and some of the new and unique things that rural residents will be receiving because of the expansion of Medicaid managed care into the rurals. I'm going to pass it off now to hop right into that to Allison Hoover, who will go over some of the benefits for the providers.
Well, thank you and thank you again. We're going to go ahead and jump right into one of the top questions that's asked of us. So what is the difference between managed care and fee-for-service Medicaid? There is a difference. There, the top priority or the top difference between us is our provider network. Our provider network is a strategic, large network of providers. So our goal is to scour the Nevada Medicaid file to assure that we are reaching out to and trying to work with every single provider that it's available to our health plan to contract with. And so there is an opportunity for members to be able to see a very large variety of, of providers and have that large network of providers for access. If a provider is not in our network and if that provider has been enrolled with the state in Nevada Medicaid, we can either expedite an enrollment to assure that we have that provider in the network. Or number two, we do have options to provide a, what we call a single case agreement to work with that provider while we're going through the contractual process. So those, that network of providers is our number one, well, one of our number one items. Care coordination, so a little different than the fee-for-service world in which we do provide a large team that we bring forward versus what fee-for-service has options for, whether it be provider relations, member services, our case managers. And then we have a large number of community health workers that are out there for member support. And then lastly, on the extra benefits, I did want to bring up the fact that we do have as managed care value-added benefits. Our value-add benefits, which Nikki's going to talk about a little bit later, are these free benefits that help save members money and help provide additional services that they may not receive through a fee-for-service model for Medicaid. Next slide. So expanding the network, as I mentioned earlier, a number one priority for my, myself and my departments is to assure that we have this large network. We are not new to Nevada. Silver Summit Health Plan has been in all 17 counties, rural, frontier, urban, since 2018. So many of the critical access hospitals, the rural health clinics and our provider groups that we're working with, we already have an established relationship with them through the Marketplace Exchange. Our AM Better product has been out in the community. We have worked with providers to assure that they are online, that their claims are getting paid correctly through the AM Better products. So now this isn't something new. We're, we're walking into a, a relationship that we've had since 2018. But we're expanding it obviously to include the Medicaid component. One area I wanted to talk about were catchment areas. I've had the privilege of, of visiting several of our catchment areas that the state approves for Medicaid, including Twin Falls, Idaho. They have FQHCs that are enrolled with Nevada Medicaid that are very open to assisting and those members that may be from jackpot Nevada, you know, end up in, in Idaho at that point. So we also too are, as I mentioned, we do look and try to assure that we are touching all providers that are available and qualified in Nevada Medicaid. We also too, one of the, the recent endeavors since obviously 2020 is really a expanded network of telehealth solutions in our network for our membership and for our providers. The number two question that I get from many of our critical access hospitals, rural health clinics is, is, you know, who, who's going to be here to help in 2026 when this opens? Our local provider relations teams, we do have access and to people for provider relations that are physically on-site. So they are there and they're local and able to help be, you know, on-site to help providers. We also too have member pop-up options for our membership in the community. Lastly, the transportation assistance, I did want to bring that up, that managed care will be taking over transportation in the rural counties. We are working very closely for, in, in implementation phase with Safe Ride. So we will have those options out there and we are communicating that to our provider network. Next slide, please. Continuity of care. So what's going to happen when fee-for-service members transition from fee-for-service to managed care? Good question. Very good question. I'm a nurse. Continued care is, you know, obviously top, top line here for us. We want to make sure that this is user-friendly and is smooth transition for these Medicaid patients. Making sure that changing from fee service to either, you know, silver, to Silver Summit is an easy option for them. Part of that is by providing a personalized evaluation of the member's condition and the network benefits, as I mentioned earlier. So I'm a member, I have a surgery that's scheduled. We have gone above and beyond what the requirement of 90 days is. We are offering 180 days, so that's six months. Six months of an option for those members to continue with their current providers and prior authorizations that are already existing. And we will assist them in that transition, including medications. Next slide, please. I think I did mention some, our telehealth options. They've really expanded quite a bit, whether it be our national agreements with Teladoc or we do have even local direct agreements with providers that are offering a wide variety of telehealth services, including behavioral health services, which is a wonderful opportunity to increase access in our rural and frontier and urban counties too. Next slide, next slide. Provider training. Christina's going to talk here in a few minutes regarding some of the tools that we have. But again, user-friendly, we want to be there. We live and we work in the community and we want to help to reduce any kind of questions, concerns, and make it an easy transition for our provider group. Next slide. There we go. So Christina, please take it over.
Can you hear me? Just want to double check that I'm now unmuted.
You're not only unmuted, but your video is working.
Perfect. Wonderful. Okay, again, my name is Christina Golan and I am the Manager of Provider Relations. So nice to meet all of you today. Next slide, please. I just want to walk through all the support that we're providing as we're going out into the community. We want to make this transition as easy as possible for our providers. We want it to be seamless. We do not want that administrative burden. We want to make it so easy that when that member comes through the door, that the provider has all the resources that they need when they're seeing that member and can direct them to the health plan for any resources that we can share with them as well. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we're doing is that we're specifically going on the road. We are calling it our roadshow tour. We are meeting with all the critical access hospitals and rural health clinics throughout the state. We're going in person in both September and October. And it's a priority for us to definitely meet with those providers and with the community-based organizations so that we can share what we offer as a health plan to the community. And we find the benefit of obviously being in each county is so different. The needs are different, so we want to tailor our training specifically to each county and each member. And next slide, please. All right, I'll pass it back over to Nikki. Thank you.
Thank you. So one of the tenets of Medicaid is whole-person care and we take that really, really seriously, which is why we have a community engagement arm that is just as robust as our provider engagement arm. So I have about 15 team members, community health workers that live and work in the communities that we serve. We have already hired four community health workers living in rural Nevada to serve our members and ensure that they get access to every service they need, including those outside of the provider's office. Next slide. So my team, along with Christina's Provider Relations Team, is, my team's already out there. We've been doing this for four months already. So when, the whole idea is that when 1126 comes along and the member gets an ID card that says Silver Summit Health Plan, they won't be completely wondering, who is this group? What is this? What is this change? So we are educating all of the community-based organizations with, and arming them with the information about the change that is coming, how it's going to happen. We're getting very specific. Because we know that our members will most likely go to their community-based organization first, those trusted partners. And they will also go to their provider first, asking for information before they think to come to their health insurance company. One of the best things about Medicaid is that it offers services outside of the provider's office, like housing supports. We address food insecurity. We have a huge workforce development program already built, already intact. So that we are meeting all of our members' needs, not just their medical needs. We are hosting multiple community events in the large rural cities so that we can introduce managed care in a fun, delightful way where families are invited and they can come and ask questions about what is managed care? And what does this change mean for me and my family? And we'll have an entire team of about 15 staff onsite at four different, we're doing this four different times. Plus, we're attending local community events today. We've started. Plus, we're attending local community events today. We've started that work already. Including bringing flyers with information on the changes that are going to occur. Next slide, please. Value added benefits. It's one of the best things about managed care. Next slide, that fee for service does not offer. So some of the most important value added benefits, in addition to transportation to their provider's office, which is a covered benefit. We also provide transportation to social service agencies through our same vendor. That's a value added benefit. We provide tutoring. We are providing four weeks of licensed childcare to any member. We're providing summer camp to our members with children. We do that today in Clark County. That will also be offered in rural counties where there is a Boys and Girls Club. Cell phones, internet access, you can see the list. So the way that we use these is that we use these value added benefits to drive toward healthy behavior. So for some of these benefits, certain requirements must be met. For example, they must have gone to their PCP in order to access some of these value added benefits. Others are just available to all the members as a benefit to being a Silver Summit member. So we're introducing this concept and these value added benefits today, getting the communities ready. So that when they do get assigned to Silver Summit Health Plan, they'll know about these benefits already. But in addition to that, we call, we personally call every single new Silver Summit member. First foremost, to let them know, do you have a PCP? If not, let's help you pick one. Do you need us to help you make the appointment? Let's get that done. Secondly, do you have any previous appointments, prescriptions? Let's make sure that all of that happens smoothly, like Allison was talking about. And then we also educate on our value added benefits and we sign them up for the ones that they want right there in that personal outbound welcome call. Next call, please, or next slide, please. Community investment, another huge advantage of having managed care in rural Nevada. Next slide. So Silver Summit has already invested $22 million since 2022. Into the state of Nevada through our community investment program. Of that, 2.1 has gone directly to provider workforce advancement. We've invested 1.1 million dollars in Pahrump. To build a maternal maternal medical home. We're doing that in partnership with Nevada Health Centers today. That's happening today. We have great plans for rural Nevada in terms of investment. Next slide, please. First and foremost, every single critical access hospital will be receiving $25,000 in 2025. And an additional $25,000 in 2026 for a total of investment of over $650,000 right out the gate. To our valued partners, we cannot do this without them. The intent of these dollars is to increase access to care. They have total authority and autonomy in choosing how they do that. And the only requirement is that they sign their contract with us, which many of them have already done and are completely willing to do. Allison and Christina have done an extraordinary job outreach to the critical access hospitals and getting these contracts signed. And then there's more investment opportunities as well, targeting rural Nevada. Next slide, please. We have an open application process where we are inviting providers and community based organizations. To apply and these funds are specifically to get ready for managed care. And the criteria is quite broad. We have a review committee that will review the applications and make the selections. Also, as I mentioned, that one of the best things about Medicaid is that it goes beyond the doors of the provider's office. And so we're allowed to provide housing supports to our members and we're. Releasing funding to build up that type of provider as well, getting them ready to enroll in managed care, be a Medicaid managed care provider. And then provide the housing support benefit to our members. Next slide, please. This is the open application. Here's the details. We will send out this deck so that you can distribute it to your constituents. And anyone is allowed to apply. Our definition of who's eligible is quite broad. And that's our presentation. I hope we have answered your questions. We're available to answer any further questions that you have. And again, we thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to be able to let you know what we're doing and how much we care. We really, really care about Nevadans. We're Nevadans and we care.
Thank you. Thank you all for that. Board members, are there any questions there before I ask some questions?
Dr. Titus, this is Commissioner Caston. I had one quick question.
Go ahead.
I'm interested in the transportation component on this and would that be utilizing our existing transportation network? Or is this going to be additional shuttles and additional transportation beyond what we have now?
It will go beyond what we have. So the the transportation we provide or provider that we've selected, Safe Ride. They have a lot of experience doing this nationally. So they use both. They'll they'll leverage the existing service providers and they bring in new ones. From surrounding states and different transportation vendors that they work with. So the answer is both. And they're building the network today. And just so you guys know, the the network for the transportation provider, we're held accountable now to the Nevada Health Authority. And ensuring that there is an adequate network. We're also held accountable to other standards in terms of how quickly the member gets picked up. How often the member doesn't get picked up. We have a rapid response team. So we're really excited to take over this benefit. As Nevadans who have, we understand the transportation issue, how long it's gone on in rural Nevada for Medicaid recipients. So we're eager to start this.
That's fantastic to hear. Thank you.
Any, any further questions? Go ahead.
Commissioner Jacobson here again. So the latest agenda is for possible action, a presentation from Silver Summit, a managed care organization. That will be serving Lyon County residents starting in January of 2026. What action are we taking?
Yeah, I saw that too. And I was surprised at for possible action because I don't see this being an action item, actually. It should have just been presentation. Shayla, was there something else you wanted? Because I have more questions after that.
My greatest apologies. That is a typo and should be for present only. There's no action. The state already took action in approving their bid, so.
Yeah, yeah, the state is the one who took action. This is a lot of information. So if there's no questions, at least at this moment from the commissioners, I have several actually. Similar to to what Castanelli Commissioner asked regarding this transportation. I want to make sure that there's not going to, the Safe Ride component is transportation just to doctor's appointment, provider's appointment. And maybe specialist appointment and not undermining our EMS services for emergency transport?
No, it's not for emergency. It's non emergency only. And then Senator Titus, thank you for the question. And then in addition to that, we do provide that value added benefit transportation for social services.
Okay, and I, this is an important question to me. Are you, is Silver Summit a for profit healthcare?
Yes, we are.
So one, one of the things, and I was, I'm just going to straight out say vehemently opposed to switching. On Medicaid in rural areas to managed care. It just can very worried about providers being able to keep their doors open under managed care model. And you're going to expand your providers in the rural area. So I want to make sure that that indeed does happen. So very curious to see what number of providers you have now. And believe me, I'm going to monitor this and see how many, if you really can indeed offer enough to expand providers. Willing to see our our patients and our constituents in Lyon County. And not undermine the brick and mortar folks that are out there working really hard to stay open. As Commissioner Jacobson already asked that question. So again, the proof is will be in the pudding. It all sounds really great until. We bill and it doesn't happen, or now you're mandating that everybody does telehealth. And so one of my my suspicion, my little antennas went up when your value added component was including internet and computers. And so I want to make sure patients aren't going to be forced to do telehealth with providers that you have contracted with. Out of state that as opposed to seeing a provider locally.
Absolutely not. First of all, we're prohibited from man- mandating anything like that because in Medicaid choice is a key tenant. So the the member always has choice on which provider they want to see that is in our network. So no, no mandates on having to choose telehealth. It's just another option is all for members who want to exercise that option. And as Allison pointed out, yeah, we do have national telehealth companies, right? We we do that. And a lot of our members use those, but we also are contracting with local providers. One of our main telehealth providers is renowned and will continue to be renowned. And as you know, Senator Titus, a lot of rural members access their telehealth system to connect to their specialists in Reno. So that's actually our main telehealth provider partner.
Right. And then, and the next thing is your housing management type of program. Are you looking at when you say assisted housing, one thing we know in healthcare and Shayla has brought it up. We we talk about housing for folks. We see somebody in the ER, but if we can't do that, if they don't have a place, we treat them, they have a wound, whatever. But now you're diabetic and they're, they don't have a house. So are you assisting in some of that? And I'm very curious to see what that rural model is for you.
I know. I'm, to be honest, I'm curious too. We've been working for a year now on assessing the housing support provider system that is in rural Nevada. And as as you guys are well aware, it's not the same as Clark and and Washoe. So that's part of the reason why we're doing those capacity building investments to build up those services. But the housing supports is now a part of our Medicaid covered benefits through a unique mechanism called in lieu of services. So the benefit that it's available today is members can receive case management and tenancy supports. So what that looks like is us a qualified community health worker working with the member to find out, okay. If you wanted to move into an apartment, what's it going to take? What do we, what services do we need to wrap around you? Workforce development, perhaps some substance use disorder treatment? And get them ready to move in and then, once they're ready and they complete a housing sustainment plan. Because we don't want to set our members up for failure, then we can, we are allowed to pay for first and last month's rent. One time only, lifetime benefit, one time for a Medicaid recipient in Nevada. And then we provide the backend case management services on helping them sustain that housing. So that's the full, full benefit that's available today as part of Medicaid.
And one thing else you mentioned is the childcare benefit. Are you talking about childcare? So in rural Nevada, they were everywhere in the state, but especially in rural Nevada, we don't have enough childcare facilities. And we're not talking Boys and Girls Clubs because we have a wonderful Boys and Girls Club access, certainly in Yarrington and Dayton area. And and firmly, I I just feel, you know, so.
Just enjoying this air conditioning.
She's got the, whoa, oops.
Whoops. Um, yeah, so the Boys and Girls Club, we're, they do do licensed childcare. And so that's our partnership is with the Boys and Girls Club for their licensed childcare up to four weeks. And then the, and then, as you know, they do the summer camp too. And so that is awesome. Oh, could you? I'm sorry, could you hear me, Senator Titus? Okay.
Okay, good. All right.
Okay. I'm not sure if she's back yet.
I, let's see here. I can, I can hear you. I'm just trying to get you back again here.
Okay. So as I was explaining, yeah, that was what we did. We've spent a lot of time out in the rules. We understand that the, it's all over the state of Nevada. But it's more acute in the rural cities of the lack of licensed childcare. So yes, the Boys and Girls Club does have licensed childcare that we will be paying up to four weeks for qualified members. And then we also are using the Boys and Girls Club as our partner for their summer day camp. And we'll pay up to four weeks for that.
Okay, I I know. Thank you for all of that. I know I've hammered you a little bit. Again, I'm, I hope you're, I hope you are incredibly successful for our rural folks.
Thank you. I do too.
But but I, we are, I'm, I'm going to watch this so closely.
Yeah, I know.
As you suspect, I will. And I think that all of all of the members of this board are. And Lyon County were just anxious about making sure that our providers stay open, that our, our citizens have access. And so hopefully it is a success. And any other commissioners or board members have questions? All right, with that said, then thank you very much. I'm sure we will be in contact.
Yes, we will.
And and thank you for the presentation. We're going to go ahead and move on to 16C. And Shayla, you're up. And finally, commissioners and board members, you get an in person presentation.
Dr. Titus, do we have public participation?
We have it at the end on item 17 when we're done here, but we have, we have to go to. I don't think after each one, unless it was an action item, we were going to do public participation. So unless I'm wrong, I think it's Shayla.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. So because it was listed as for possible action, I think we should probably just open it up for a public comment. Thanks.
All right. Is there any public there? I'm busy online. If not, we'll move to 16C. Shayla.
Shaila Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services, for the record. We received last month the update for last fiscal year on our Division of Child and Family Services, Child Protection Services counts. So I wanted to provide an update to this board in regards to what those numbers look like. So, and this will be really quick. And unfortunately, I also wanted to provide a comparison to what the state looks like. So the state provides child protection services to the fifteen rural counties. Washoe provides their own, Clark provides their own. So I don't have data to compare for that. I also, because the state website's down, don't have the most recent year to be able to compare for you guys. What these graphs look like in comparison to the overall state numbers. But I can tell you what they look like up until 2023, 2024. So with this, the first step to a call in to CPS, when somebody calls in and makes a report or a complaint about something they've observed or a concern that they have. The first step is that it either gets screened in or gets screened out. So the individual that takes that call or takes that online complaint form, they review the information available. They sometimes will call back or request additional information and then they make a decision on whether, if it gets screened in, it goes into the Division of Child and Family Services programming and gets assigned a caseworker. If it gets screened out, sometimes that gets sent to Lyon County Human Services and we're able to get out and provide services. Sometimes it gets put into other classifications like what they call information only or other information and referral. But they get screened out of the DCFS system. So they don't own what happens with that case. So you can see in comparison here from 2019, 2020 during COVID, we had a really low number of calls in. So we had a high number of calls screened in, but overall, the the numbers look about the same as far as total calls. And then you see a tiny dip of screened in and then it's starting to go back up here most recently in 2425. Of calls of a number of 139 being screened in and 685 being screened out. But the total number of calls typically stay within that high 700, low 800 range. Next slide, please. So the report findings, so this is, once DCFS has opened it, of those screened in calls, so if you're looking at 2425, 139. Thirty of them were substantiated. That means thirty cases, they found that there was something going on in that home that equals. Classification of abuse or neglect. 119 were what they call unsubstantiated. They went out, they investigated and they identified of that 139 that got screened in, 119 had nothing go. They went out, they investigated, and they identified of that one thirty-nine that got screened in, a hundred and nineteen had nothing going on. And they closed the case. So you can see twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we had a high number of substantiated calls. So COVID, we did see an increase of child abuse and neglect. But when you're looking statistically speaking, thirty-six to thirty, and you look at that line over the last six years, we hover in the mid twenties to mid thirty range of substantiated cases. So we haven't seen a high uptick at all in substantiated cases. We have seen that high uptick of unsubstantiated with that dip and then coming back up to unsubstantiated and again, being high in twenty-four, twenty-five. Really, that comes to the screening process, right? So if we screen in more, we're going to have more on either end of the substantiated or unsubstantiated. But what it looks like is that really actual child abuse and neglect via DCFS investigation stays pretty steady. But the unsubstantiated count goes up. Uh, what I can share is somewhere in the twenty-three, twenty-four range, they redistrict DCFS where Lyon County is now its own region, where previously we were shared. Parts of us were a part of Douglas County, parts of us were a part of Churchill County, and parts of us were a part of Carson City. And so it's been, they've done some internal reorganization to where now Lyon County is Lyon County. And so we believe that there's been a high increase in screened in calls because there's more dedicated staff to Lyon County, which is great. But also great, we're not seeing an uptick in child abuse and neglect. On the next slide, you'll see the allegation categories. Neglect is the highest number of substantiated calls. So of those thirty-nine that were substantiated in twenty twenty-five, you see that white on the side, twenty-two of them were neglect. Seven of them were physical injury or abuse. One was physical injury neglect. So it was identified that through neglect, the child suffered a physical injury. Not necessarily direct abuse from their caregiver. Three of those were sexual abuse. And we didn't have any sexual abuse neglect or any substance exposed infants in twenty-four, twenty-five or twenty-three, twenty-four. So that's been on the decrease, which is fabulous. But you can see there that over the years, the more substantiated cases, the number of allegations that have been substantiated stay pretty consistent. Neglect is our number one issue, followed by physical injury neglect or physical injury abuse. If I had another slide showing you the state numbers, you would see those similar curves. And we just don't know if twenty-four, twenty-five is going back on that uptick as far as calls in and unsubstantiated, because unfortunately, I don't have access to that data book right now. But the rest of those curves for the full fifteen rural counties looks very similar. And then I can say we are not the highest number of complaints nor the highest number of substantiated cases within the fifteen counties. We are fourth or fifth when it comes to the fifteen in the rankings, despite us having the highest number of youth. So I think that's a win for Lyon County and a benefit of having additional services available. But that's all I have for you. I just want to make you aware of that information and that data. And then when I do get state comparison information, I will be happy to bring you back.
Those if numbers are reported to the sheriff's office, do you guys track them as well? Are you involved in that? Or are these just human services?
Those are just DCFS numbers. So I believe, and you would be the more expert on the process. But if you guys go out and you guys then have that mandatory reporting requirement, we've identified abuse or neglect, and you guys reach out to DCFS, those contacts are included in those numbers because those are state numbers. Those actually are not a reflection of Lyon County Human Services programs.
Great. Any other questions? I I have one, Shayla. I I'm wondering about when you do get a substantiated complaint, what does it take the how long does it take from the call to actually the determination it's substantiated or not? Just wondering about the personnel. And then what do you do with that information? And how quickly do you act?
You know, Dr. Titus, I would have to bring out DCFS to do a full presentation for you guys on what that process looks like. I can tell you from differential response, which is not included in the numbers just presented, we have a three-day window to go make eyes on that kiddo and that make contact with that family. So I imagine that they have similar windows for requiring social workers to go out on any of those complaints that are screened in. And then getting from a screened in to a substantiated, probably, you know, I I couldn't even guess at what that looks like from a DCFS perspective. I don't know how many contacts that takes. I don't know what their investigation process looks like in detail in regards to how long it takes for them to stay substantiated and then make a decision as far as what that service plan looks like. So I can absolutely partner with DCFS and get a more detailed presentation if that's the interest of the board.
Yeah, I appreciate that because we, you know, Lyon County was hammered a little bit by Joe Hart on one of his investigative thing regarding a family. And I just want to make sure that we have all the data that we need, that that we do respond to these things. And if they're not, if they're if they're not substantiated, great. But if they are, what do we do? And and also, I have, I get from from the state, the the state depart, our state of Nevada about reports that weren't, they considered not substantiated, and then something bad happened to the kiddos. And so I do see those reports, and I just wonder if Lyon County gets anything like that.
We do not. So Lyon County Human Services at least does not get any information on families screened in. We do get referrals from DCFS for folks that are screened out. If they meet that screener's level of information and referral, then they'll send them over to Lyon County Human Services and differential response and or our family support program and or our youth crisis team will respond and work with the family from there, creating a service plan. And those individuals we can speak to, and I can provide some programmatic and detailed information to you guys in the future as far as what outcomes look like for those programs. But none of those are included in DCFS screened in. Sometimes we do have multiple touches, right? So DCFS might screen in a family and that family might have already been working with Lyon County Human Services for another reason, right? We provide services to the lifespan. So maybe we're working with them on housing support, or maybe we're working with them on utility support. And then they end up with a screened in DCFS case. But DCFS does not communicate with us on that level of detail. We only find out about that because we're already working with the family and they disclose. So there is that level of communication back and forth between DCFS as far as screened in families or screened out for that matter. We just get numbers. We don't get names.
All right. Any other? Thank you, Shayla. I appreciate you that. Any other questions? All right. With that, that was the presentation. And so we thank you. And we'll move on to sixteen D, something I asked that we put on this agenda. All of you might recall that last meeting of this board, I brought up questions regarding the potential vector abatement program for Smith Valley. And subsequent to that, I'm I went and met with the next Smith Valley Advisory Board. And and Commissioner Hockaday was there, and and I would welcome him jumping in at any time here. My impression was that there was very little interest, if any, of doing anything other than what they're already doing, which is basically nothing. Certainly didn't want to have to, when we brought up putting on the ballot and paying for it and all those things that we had discussed as a board last meeting, there's very little interest. What they really come out of it, though, and a positive nature, just by having the discussion, the the Smith Valley Park Board is addressing some of it. And I think that's really what the goal was, is somebody addressing it and how best to to do that. And maybe Commissioner Hockaday, could you give us a real update on what's happening there? Are you, do we, do we have power back on? All right, then. I have better power up here with my Starlink than Lyon County does, apparently. Um, real quick then, so Commissioner Hockaday, that's where I had left off. I'm not sure what you heard. But maybe you could give an update on what the Parks Board had had suggested or is doing.
Yeah, that's not a problem, Senator Titus. We more or less would like to make sure that the park is taken care of. And so we are be working with facilities and also with the Chair of the Park Board in being able to fog the park so that that county property will be taken care of. We know that in the past, the majority of people don't want to have their taxes increased. But I think the word will continue to be out there that if somebody wants to pick up that issue and run a petition and see if people want to take care of spraying Smith Valley similar to what happens in Mason Valley, then that would be something that the public could pick up and run with. But at the present time, we're going to work with getting the fog fogger done at the park, at Dressler Park. And I get that taken care of so that we don't have complaints with people using the park.
Great, thank you. And I any questions regarding that? Because in my mind, it's kind of an ideal solution and suggestion was it let's if folks want it in Smith Valley, then we would welcome them coming up with a petition. And I think that that will give everybody pause. And so I know as commissioners, if somebody reaches out to you, you say can certainly say we're addressing it. And certainly we're addressing it at the park. Because one of the things we don't want to have happen is that folks not wanting to bring their kids to the Smith Valley Park and participate in Little League or participate in softball or soccer, et cetera, because of the mosquitoes. And that are true issues. So I think that's a good solution, and we'll continue to monitor it and address people's concerns. And does anybody have questions for me regarding that issue? Hearing none, then there it was just a said possible action. So again, do we have to take public participation on this then? And we certainly can.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. Yeah, because it's listed as for possible action, we should make a motion that we take no action on this item.
Do we have a sec? All right. All in favor of no action being taken then?
All right.
Any opposition? Fantastic. So it passed unanimously. All right. And with that, we'll go to the final agenda item is sixteen E, which is a possible update on the next Board of Health meeting, either December fourth or December sixteenth or eighteenth, sorry.
Taylor Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services for the record. So we do have to hold a Board of Health quarterly. Our one in July is so close to this one to accommodate the legislative session, but we do need to sneak another one in in the next quarter. So proposing the fourth or the eighteenth. And then based off conversation today, it sounds like maybe Community Health Alliance would be a good opportunity to come out at one of those meetings or at that meeting. And also potentially, depending on the board's interest, there is another managed care organization that is also supposed to be out in the rules, which is CareSource. We could attempt to schedule them. Also, a presentation on Lyon County Human Services Youth Services and what that looks like. And then there's also in the works with Nevada, NACO and MOU for Adult Protective Services, much like how Dr. Titus was asking about the communication back and forth with DCFS and local counties, which is not as forward moving as APS is at this point in time where we're trying to work with them on a formal MOU to be able to share that information. So we could probably bring Amy Heinz-Sutherland out to talk about that process. All dependent on on the flavor of the board and your interest.
December fourth with the Christmas party on the eighteenth, the last thing we want is for everybody to be waiting on us in a post-shortened meeting anyhow.
I'll second that.
Yeah, just a little discussion here before we take a vote. The the fourth does work for me. The eighteenth gets too close to the holidays. So the fourth would also be good. So any other discussion before we take a vote? With that, all in favor of who doing on the fourth of December? Any opposition?
I'm sure we do have to do public comments because it is a.
Okay, very good. Well, before we take that vote, then, public comment online or in person? Hearing none, then we'll go ahead and the vote I heard was unanimous in favor of December fourth. So any opposition? I guess that there's none. All right, very good. We'll do it on the fourth. And what I'm what I'd like to do, Shayla, is there's a lot of information that was given today that's really technical. And so trying to keep these meetings at about an hour and a half or so, I think is is really good and not get too into the weeds. But at the same time, I think it's critical information. I also want to reach out to all board members. And if there's any item that you would like to see on this agenda, I think it's it's really a forum for all of us and the health of of our great counties. So always open to that and reaching out to Aaron or Shayla to get it on the agenda. Certainly welcome all all thoughts on those. So with that, any other comments from board members?
Dr. Titus, one thing, did they say they were coming out doing a roadshow in September and October for all the counties?
Right, they were going to meet with different providers. Are we talking about Silver Summit?
Yes.
Yes, they they will be coming out. Shayla, are they meeting with you? Or are they going to things like the hospital, meeting with your different and the different providers? Are you, could you follow up on that?
So is that with, I guess, before we move on, is that going to be during the regular? Present or is that going to be a health agenda?
They won't be here, for the record. So they'll be going out to providers. They have come out to the Human Services Office. They have gone to Nevada, NACO, that they will, they'll be going around to the medical providers and anybody else that they're trying to get within their network, but they won't be here. So you won't have to hear that again, I promise.
Any other questions? Are that then with that, we'll go to our last agenda item, which would be public participation, if there's any there online. At that point in time, any questions for me from the board? Hearing none, go ahead. All right. Hearing none, then I I yeah, move to somebody moved to adjourn? All right, any opposition? Then we're going and vote will be all in favor of moving to adjourn? All right, thank you. And thank you, everybody, for your patience with me. I'll be in person there December fourth. Thank you very much. Thank you, Shayla, for putting all this together.
For the record, the Board of Health is adjourned at twelve forty-two. We convene as a board of county commissioners, and we're we're going to adjourn at twelve forty-two, too.